2024 Meeting of the Person Board of County Commissioners to Order at this time. Recognize that we do have a quorum and we will ask Commissioner Jason Thomas to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Charlie Palmer will lead our pledge.
Let us pray. Our most kind and deharmingly Father, we come tonight grateful for the opportunity to come together as free Americans. God, we ask you to be with this board, ask you to be with us as we make the decisions for the whole of Person County and we ask you just for the wisdom and strength. God, we thank you for watching over us, we thank you for being with all of our first responders, being with the front line with those that answer the call each and every day. God, we ask you just to watch over all of our police, our sheriff department, our EMS, our fire, God, watch over all of our first responders and we thank you for each one of them that put their lives on the line each and every day. We will ask you to be with our troops overseas, God, watch over them as they protect our homeland and we ask you to be with all our leaders in our nation, God. And we ask you just to go with us, lead us, guide us and save us and keep us all safe. In your heavenly name I do pray, amen.
I wish you the best of pleas, must please stand and recite your vows. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First on the agenda is discussion, adjustment and approval of the agenda as presented. Motion.
So moved.
Motion for approval in the discussion. Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Item number one on the agenda is a public hearing, rezoning map amendment application RZO 124 request by the applicant Person County Economic Development to rezone the plus or minus 1,347.34 acres subject property identified as a Person County Mega Park from an RC rural conservation to a G1 general industrial zoning designation. Mr. Bowley.
Good evening Commissioners, Chairman.
Evening.
Tonight bringing forward rezoning map amendment application RZO 124.
Mr. Bowley, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think we should push this out. All right, hold on just a second. Procedural correction there. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing? It's usually hear from him first, but that's okay. I have a motion to open the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, sure. So this is RZ 0124, the Mega Park zoning map amendment. Subject property is 1,347.34 acres generally located at Country Club Road Edwin Robertson Road intersection, site is vacant and adjacent uses are vacant primarily and residential. Site has an industrial future lane use designation and an RC rural conservation zoning classification. Proposed zoning amendment to GI general industrial will be within the industrial designated lands. Site has been contemplated for future industrial uses in the county's Mega Park for economic development purposes. The site may need to be assembled and platted in the future for development. Proposed rezoning is consistent with the county's comp plan and planning ordinance. This is an aerial photograph of the property. You can see the Edwin Robinson Road bisects the property sort of in the center east-west and then to the north-south is Country Club Road. And it's three large tracks and one small two and a half acre track. This is the southern part, the applicant has platted the property, this is the southern half. This is the northern half and that's Edwin Robertson Road that dark line. This is the industrial future lane use designation, it's been on the property for some time. This is the current zoning designation of RC and the proposed GI. This is the comprehensive plan guiding principles. Guiding principle number two facilitating sustainable economic growth. Guiding principle number 2.1 designate sufficient developable land and sites to support economic growth. The GI zoning amendment will allow for future industrial development on site that appropriately uses the city of Roxboro central utilities which water is to the site, sewer is some distance away. Guiding principle number 2.4 identify and recruit industry sectors that'll bring diversity to the economic employment base. GI zoning designation on the site will attract industry sectors at this location and diversify the employment base of the county. Guiding principle 2.7 provide utility infrastructure to support economic growth. The extension of the city of Roxboro central water sewer services into the site will support future developments in this part of the county through line extensions and capacity at central plants. Going to potential motion based on the above, Planning Zone Department staff recommends adoption of rezoning map amendment RZ 0124. It's also recommended the Board of Commissioners adopt a statement describing whether their action is consistent or inconsistent with the comp plan and why this action is reasonable in the public's interest as follows. And I gave you a sample motion update. I hereby move to adopt rezoning map amendment application RZ 0124 for the Person County Mega Park site to zone the 1,347.34 acre subject property from an RC rural conservation to a G1 general industrial. Zoning designation and find it is consistent with the adopted Person County and City Roxboro joint comprehensive land use plan specifically in the public's interest to designate sufficient developable land and sites to support economic growth, to attract industry sectors at this location and diversify the employment base of the county and to provide utility infrastructure to support economic growth. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Questions, I'm all members. Probably no one knows yet, but do you have one about the sewer?
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be a pump station to a gravity flow down to the plant?
It would have to be gravity to that distance at some length.
At some point.
And then complemented by pump stations.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bowley, I know this is a little unusual, but I just want to make sure our Commissioners are fully aware of what's being proposed. So the proposed zoning district is general industrial, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Could you just in very general terms talk to our Commissioners about uses that are allowed in a general industrial zoning district?
Yes, sir.
I don't know that you need to read the chart, but want to make sure if they have any questions about allowable uses, they have the opportunity to ask.
General industrial uses, of course allow accessory buildings, they also allow aircraft equipment, airport operations. Let's see if I can hit the ones that are just permitted uses. Automobile parking, commercial lots, bus stations, churches, temples, synagogues, construction trades, daycare center, equipment rental, light and heavy industrial uses, fire stations, office and professional office, post office civic uses, radio and television transmitting towers, schools, primarily and some others.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this is really a question for the board. As you all know, when you're considering a general district rezoning, you should consider all the uses that are allowed in the new zoning district. So if you as Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Bowley about allowable uses, now would be the time to ask or if you need further information, now is the time to ask. So thank you for that, Mr. Chairman.
The following questions, I've heard this several times as we rezon, so I don't need to ask any questions. Anyone else?
I will add that it's a mega site, one of six in the state of North Carolina that's been pre-identified, so it is for advanced manufacturing type uses, so large scale.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have comments in favor of or in opposition to this request?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have no individual signed up in opposition of or in favor of.
All right, here none then. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A motion to close the public hearing in the discussion. Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Item number two is consideration to grant or deny the request for rezoning map amendment application RZ 0124 requested by the applicant and as just presented and stated by Mr. Bowley. Do we have a motion to approve the request to allow rezoning?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I hereby move to adopt the rezoning map amendment application RZ dash 01 dash 24 for Person County Mega Park site to rezone to the 1,347.34 acre subject property from an RC rural conservation to a GI general industrial zoning designation and find it consistent with the adopted Person County and City Roxboro joint comprehensive land use plan specifically in the public's interest to designate sufficient developable land and sites to support economic growth, to attract industry sectors at this location and to diversify the employment base of the county and to provide utility infrastructure to support economic growth.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Need a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Person County official zoning map or zoning amendment application RZ 0124. Do we have that motion to adopt?
Chairman, I make a motion to amend the zoning request.
Do we have a motion on the floor for adoption? Any comments or questions? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Next on the agenda is an informal comment period that we set aside 10 minutes each meeting for comments from the public concern concerns of theirs and again, we do have 10 minutes set aside, but Madam Clerk, how many do we have?
We have four individuals, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we can do three minutes, we'll be okay.
Okay.
Page a little bit.
All right, thank you.
If anyone wants to speak a little long within the two, we'll be all right, still be okay.
All right, if I can instruct IT to please set the timer for three minutes. The first speaker we have is Timothy Sweeney.
Afternoon.
My name is Timothy Sweeney and I currently serve as a paramedic lieutenant with Person County EMS. I've served in this community in an EMS capacity for the past four years, starting as a student and then choosing to become a full-time paramedic with Person over other opportunities that were in front of me. Over those years, I've had the opportunity to observe the development that has taken place within EMS in this county. I began here as a full-time paramedic when every single shift had an opening for work and when the strains of understaffing and underpayment burdened the entire organization. At that time, there was a tremendous uncertainty. It was the tail end of the COVID pandemic, resources were scarce and an organizational culture was forced to be reactive to current problems instead of proactive to future ones. But even during that uncertainty, the sense of community and the mission to provide the best possible emergency care to the citizens of this county fueled my desire to remain Just around six months into my employment, leadership changed over to Chief Schwalenberg and Chief Chandler. From the very beginning, two of them have carried this agency to the success that we are beginning to see today. Chief Schwalenberg, sorry, began at this time with EMS by meeting individually with every single one of us, engaging the needs from within the organization. He has been the most involved leader that you can imagine and he continues to work over 100 hours per week to keep EMS, 911 and EM prepared and handle anything that comes our way. Chief Schwalenberg has supported the individuals of this organization by supporting continued education, leadership courses and opportunities outside of EMS. He introduced himself to EMS over two years ago with a simple yet powerful statement, "We own the culture" and he has personified that statement ever since. His mission is clear and his drive to accomplish our mission speaks for itself through his dedication to this community. I live one hour and 11 minutes away from this county line. I pass by two hospitals and pass through two counties that are both hiring paramedics. I don't have to travel this far to be a paramedic. I travel this far because I want to be a paramedic in this county and because the last two years of leadership within our organization has created an agency where employment is well worth the long commute. As you already know, Person County EMS sits in a much better position now than at the beginning of 2022. We have a strong, dedicated and structured leadership team that is headed by values of integrity, personal courage, selfless service and professionalism. We boast an agency that sits closer to fully staffed than it has since well before I started here and most importantly, we're an agency that provides the highest quality of care to citizens who call 911. This evolution wasn't the result of a miracle. It was the result of thousands of hours of behind the scenes work by both Chief Schwalenberg and Chief Chandler. Chief Schwalenberg has committed more of this time to this agency and subsequently the entire county than anyone I know. The high quality leadership has been the driving force in our success. has been the driving force in our success, and it is certainly the driving force in my personal commitment to this agency. Furthermore, as a proud service member myself, I speak on behalf of my chief when I say that he embodies every single bit of the Army values, which are loyalty, duty, respect, honor, selfless service, integrity, and personal courage, and those are the very values necessary for leading EMS, 911, and EM in this county. Chief Schwalenberg has proven that it takes a veteran to do this job right. Person County is not physically my home, but the community that I've been blessed to serve and work for during my tenure is one that I wish to continue serving for as long as possible. This is my community, and the community I intend on serving for a long time. I ask that you continue to support EMS, and through EMS, continue to support our community. Chief Schwalenberg, Chief Chandler, and our agency are on the right path, but we're just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Brandon Fox.
Evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
Ruth Baker Ginsburg said to speak the truth, even if your voice shakes. Uh, this is not easy for me, but I feel it necessary, so here it goes. I would like to start this speech by saying that I am speaking of my own free will of beliefs, and have in no way been coerced to speak tonight. In the last couple of weeks, it has been well-known in the public forum that the honesty and integrity of my emergency management director, Tom Schwalenberg, along with county manager Catherine Cathy, has been brought into question for frivolous accusations that simply don't have any basis. I'm simply here to speak to my opinion and the character of these individuals. Chief Schwalenberg has been one of the most positive changes that our EMS agency has seen in my last twelve years of employment. He's engaged, caring, hardworking, and trustworthy in all circumstances. He selflessly serves our community, even when stretched to the max. He can regularly be seen until 10:00 PM working in his office to get the job done. When I returned home from the Veterans' Rite of Honor about a month ago, there was a county commissioner standing outside the bus to welcome us home. He gave a fiery speech with his fist in the air about how appreciated our EMS service is, but what he may not have realized is that our chief voluntarily took his day to attend that trip with us. He benefited the least financially for his time and gave the most effort. If chief is in his office, there is an open-door policy. He regularly requests sessions with staff members just to hear from us and see what feedback we can provide to make our agency better. He is an asset that would be almost impossible to replace, and our county is better for the leadership and expertise he provides. Admittedly, I have not, have had very little personal interaction with manager Cathy. What I have seen from her is total transparency, advocacy for her employees, and a strong work ethic. She regularly communicates with hundreds of county employees through email, and anytime there has been a question that needed to go through the county manager's office, it has always been handled with the highest level of promptness and professionalism. As Commissioners, you have a responsibility to find the truth. Truth for your employees, truth for the public, truth for yourselves. Your highest responsibility is to your Creator, who commands honesty and integrity as one of the Ten Commandments. Exodus twenty-three states, "You shall not spread a false report; you shall not join hands with a wicked man to be a malicious witness; you shall not fall in with the many to do evil, nor shall you bear witness in a lawsuit siding with the many, so as to pervert justice." I urge you to exhaust yourselves in an attempt to find all of the facts and seek God's guidance before making decisions in these chambers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Julie Nye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Julie Nye, and I've lived in Mount Tersa Township in Person County for twenty years. I was one of the three hundred or so Personians who turned out last December to observe and protest your rezoning vote for the Mariah Energy Center. I'm dismayed to see that it may all be starting up again with the Mega Park rezoning, but since there were no comments, I guess none, but that's not why I'm here today. As a member of Person County Down Home's Public Schools Strong, I've been attending school board meetings and educating myself about many issues facing our public schools. Today, we learned about a newly discovered mold problem at Person High School exacerbated by HVAC issues that PSC staff have not had control over. In addition to resolving the immediate problem at Person High, the superintendent wants to make sure that HVAC systems in all the schools are optimally configured to respond to the increased heat and humidity conditions that we're all learning to live under. These repairs won't be inexpensive. In the coming weeks, my colleagues with Person County Down Home will be sharing information with you about some potentially very significant billions of dollars, that's billions with a B, federal funding opportunities for schools, residences, and other community-based projects under provisions of the Inflation Reduction Act and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. We want to work with you and county staff to ensure that Person County schools, other qualifying organizations, and individual property owners, owners get their fair share of these funds. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrea Childers.
Good evening, I have visual reads again tonight.
Good evening.
This is a letter that I wrote and sent to DEQ a couple of weeks ago. I was going to copy you guys, but since only one of you actually read your emails, I figured I would just read it to you tonight, so that's why it starts with "Good morning." Good morning. I am writing to you this morning because I feel compelled to try to make you understand the perspective of residents living close to the MEK. This is not a complaint, it's just an explanation. For almost thirty-two years, my family has lived on ten acres less than a half a mile, as the crows fly, from the MEK. We have a creek that runs the back border of our property. That creek is primarily fed from a creek on the MEK property. This creek was the largest determining factor in buying this property. It is a part of our home. It is where I went for solace when I miscarried my first child. It is where our fur babies and non-fur babies played to escape the summer heat. It served as a biology, environmental, and wildlife lab for our children as they grew up. The creek was a playground for our children and their friends their whole lives. Up until last month, it was a spot that I visited daily, just for a little peace. I no longer walk to the creek. As a matter of fact, I purposely avoid it, because I get physically sick every time I look at it. I have attached pictures, because I want you to see the transformation that our creek has taken. At first, when Dominion started pre-construction, the creek would be muddied, and then it would clear up. Now it never clears up. It just remains a constant chocolate milk consistency. This convolution, this pollution is coming straight off the MEK, and if you have any doubts of that, I invite you, and each and every one of you, to my home, and I will walk you up this creek right to the MEK. I did it today with a reporter. Please bring your hiking boots, bug spray, and lots of water. I'm not writing to you to ask you to stop construction on the MEK. I'm not that naive, although I would most certainly welcome that decision. I am asking you to make Dominion Energy be a good corporate neighbor, and not pollute its neighbor's properties. I know you say, and this is DEQ, that you cannot do anything, but that's not exactly accurate. You could ask Dominion for better BMPs, or do turbidity testing to make sure that when they are releasing their water, it meets state standards. To ask these things of a billion-dollar company, soon to be borrowed out by the largest LNG provider on the continent, would not be undue burden. It would actually provide some, albeit small, protections to the citizens of the state of North Carolina. I am begging you to do what is right. And gentlemen, while this letter went to DEQ, you guys still have the ability to ask them to do a wildlife study. You still have the ability to ask them to do a stormwater runoff. I've been asking this of you for ten months, and you all have not done it. You can do what's right for the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that can conclude our informal comment period.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number three on the agenda is discussion adjustment approval of consent agenda as presented. Do we have a motion for approval?
Dismissed.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Item number four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five legislative goals. Manager Cathy.
Good evening. Every two years, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners asks counties to submit proposals for legislative goals that the associations should seek to support in the best interest of counties. So the goal-setting process takes every, uh, takes place on even-numbered years and consists of five stages. So we're in the first stage now, the solicitation of proposals from the counties, and then the process walks through all the way to adopting the legislative agenda at the Legislative Goals Conference, which will be held in November. I've included in your packet the, uh, the list of goals that they adopted for the last biennium. Those were to just prompt some thinking through whether some of those are still pertinent, um, to us as a county, whether some of those have been accomplished, and kind of thinking through what are your priorities for the next biennium. Um, the NCAACC is open to us submitting none, one, two, three. Um, it's really up to you as far as what your priorities are, um, to kind of throw in the mix for consideration through the steering committees, onto the Board of Directors, um, before final adoption. So I'd just like to open it up, um, to you all for discussion. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about the process, and, uh, receive any proposals that you have to pass along to the NCAACC for their consideration.
Board members?
I have seven proposals.
Okay.
For legisla- uh, legislative action. Put your hats on, I'm gonna take them off. Uh, general government, I would love to see, seek legislation to assist public infrastructure funding. New EMS, number one, on top of the chart, EM, new EMS structure for housing, equipment, and employees. Number two, PCC funding for chat building and equipping classes with the new PCC Advanced Tech nursing plumbing and welding equipment. Environmental support, support additional funding for recycling and solid waste, including tires and electronics. Number four, support legislation that promotes recruitment and retention for fresh responders, detention officers in jails, including pay scale adjustments, support for schools renovation. Number five, to coincide with ADA compliance. Number six, support funding and legislative, legislation to expand broadband access. And finally, number seven, support increased funding and services for older Americans and veterans.
What was that last word, older Americans and what?
Veterans.
Veterans, okay, thank you.
Any others?
I mean, some of, Charlie, like the broadband that's already mentioned in it, on the, on the goals on that, so I think you covered.
I don't know if we got the whole county covered with the previous.
Well, my understanding with the Association of County Commissioners, this is a broad objective for the entire, all one hundred counties, where, um, trying to work with the state and the federal government will. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So it's goals that, um, they can be goals that are very important to us, because it may be significant to Person County, and then when we submit that goal, you know, they might, may find the commonalities between what our goals are with other counties, um, throughout the state. So they will become generalized goals. And, and the list that was provided were the previous goals, so any of those would have to be re-adopted through the new process. So it is starting, um, from square one to build the new list of goals for the new biennium.
May I?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, several months ago, six months or more ago, I spoke with, I think it was Bright Speed when they were here.
Mm-hmm.
And they were telling me that they weren't covering all the way up to the Virginia Line, including the Mayo, entire Mayo section of the county. That includes, uh...
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything that you said, you know, especially with the Community College, but I-
I just want to make sure that we get what we can.
Absolutely. So I'm full agreement with, uh, Commissioner Palmer's, um, recommendations to be added to the legislative goals.
Any other additions to Commissioner Palmer's comments?
I think I would like to see, again, an increase in teacher salaries and benefits. That is, um, we are, last time I read, we were low, uh, if you look at all the other states, as far as teacher salaries and benefits, and we, if we want to maintain, uh, very good teachers in this state, we need to be able to be competitive with the other states. So one of my recommendations was teacher salaries and benefits, and I agree with Charlie Broadband for rural counties is very important. We're still not where we, uh, or originally heard hundred percent coverage. We're not there, uh, from the governor, I think, if I'm not mistaken, but one of them, they were, that was the goal, so we say have a hundred percent coverage, and we are not there, and our rural counties are still suffering, uh, with, uh, not having access to broadband, and I'd like to see them work on that. Um, and then also we look at, and I know this is DOT, but I think the state also ought to get involved with infrastructure, um, with, uh, connecting, uh, counties, uh, rural counties, uh, to, uh, access, look at the roads, look at expanding those roads to where, uh, it becomes easy or makes it easier for a shipping company to be able to get to a major highway, major interstate, uh, without having to go through downtown Durham, for instance, so.
Oh, very good. That list is pretty long for you.
The list of nine.
Yeah, and be patient. Be patient. Commissioner Palmer, Commissioner Perry, you and I, we've been talking about broadband, what now, twenty years?
Uh, well, about, you know, close to that.
Close to that. So we're working. Uh, so this, I mean, it's good to share with, uh, the State Association what our goals are for them and, and for them representatives, so that's good.
Chairman Powell?
Oh, yes, sir.
One more comment?
Sure.
I'm on the advisory board with the Rec Department. As we all know, John, the director, Director John Hill always brings a long list of recommendations for Rec Department, and he tells me if I don't ask, I don't get. And that's true.
It is.
That's why I asked.
Is that, um, anything else you need from us?
Yeah, are you all in agreement about those nine?
Harvey, yeah.
So I'll, kind of, uh, I'll expand upon those into the format that they're looking forward and get for, and get those ready to go to the NCAACC. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, and moving along to, um, on our agenda. Chairman's report. Uh, a few meetings during the, um, period between tonight and, and the previous meeting, attending things like PCBIC meeting, planning board UDO meeting, um, met with two representatives from, um, Senator Ted Budd last week. I met during a period of time that we did have the animal services, uh, um, I believe, what would they call that, an ice cream, lunch, or something, whatever you guys did. It was honoring the volunteers is what you were doing, so I had it on my calendar, but, uh, the Ted Budd request came, and I did meet with them for about ninety minutes and, uh, talked about several different things, the large items for Person County, several of which are covered in this comprehensive report that we're going to get the manager to submit to, uh, to the State Association, and also I did attend the meeting with, uh, John Hill for Parks and Rec and the proposed, um, trail issue that, uh, that we've had on the table for quite a while, and, and we had one, well, it wasn't, I think, I think it was fun for one person and not for the rest of us, our, uh, finance officer retired. So I guess it was fun and happy with her, but we've- So, I guess it was fun and happy with her, but we've gotta do something to fill in the blank there. But, uh, anyway, that, that was good. Also, uh, there's a couple of things I wanna, wanna mention here. And, uh, recently, I guess it was last Thursday, DEQ had a, uh, air quality meeting in Henderson. And going along with some of the other comments about rumors, there was a rumor that Person County denied DEQ the, uh, use of facilities here in Person County for that hearing. That is not true. For any property use outside such as someone requesting use of the auditorium, the county has a policy, it has a procedure, it has a form to complete. And, uh, that's a waiver, I believe you would call it a waiver. Is that the correct word?
Yes.
And DEQ's refused to sign it. So, we had offered the auditorium, I believe PCC had been offered, and the Kirby had been offered. Those were, um, choices that they made. So, they decided not to come to, um, Roxbury in Person County for that. The county did not request, did not reject, uh, their appearance here. So, uh, they made the decision to go to the community college in, in Henderson, I believe it was. So, I want to make, make that clear. Couple of other things here I'd like to say. There was a special meeting of PCBIC held, uh, July twenty-fifth. And that was for reorganization of EC PCBIC as the topic of discussion. Guidelines for cons, for the con, discussion there were distributed to commissioners in this room on July fifteenth and a hard copy given to PCBIC President Philip Allen. And that same day, that document was emailed to President Allen. At the beginning of the July twenty-fifth, uh, meeting, Mr. Allen addressed the board with a rough draft of concerns, which had been given him several weeks earlier. The official version, the one that we had in hand here, uh, of suggested changes to be PCBIC given to President Allen at the commissioners' meeting was not shared nor referenced with PCBIC members at the meeting. There was no explanation given as to why the official document was not presented to the PCBIC board. In an email to President Allen and all PCBIC board members, I have requested that the official document handed out in, in this room from the VOC to be used in future discussions, feedback, and actions to this commission board. Along the same lines of PCBIC being in the rumor mill, there's been much discussion and rumors related to PCBIC's funding, past and fu- future. A recent Courier Times article stated that PCBIC's, and I quote, "The monetary contributions toward the Mega Park is in excess of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars." And it shows that most or all of those funds were incentive agreements with, um, let me back up just a second, I'm sorry. A bit misleading. My research shows that most or all of those funds were from incentive agreements with two industrial prospect, prospects negotiated by the county, not PCBIC. When those two industries failed to meet their agreed-upon incentive obligations, such as employment and or facilities improvement, uh, benchmarks, the clawback funds were requested, uh, and routed to PCBIC. All clawback fund negotiations were done by the county, not by PCBIC. The dollar amount of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars quoted in the article doesn't reflect the actual amount spent on the Mega Park project. Coming to my point, to our manager. I'm requesting a complete report on PCBIC's funding from January two thousand to August twenty twenty-four. Please include all revenues in, including but not limited to lease funds, grants, clawback funds from force protection, and Eaton Corporation. That concludes my remarks. And Manager Kathy, you have your report, please.
Sure. First, I'd like to say thank you to all of the employees, volunteers within our community, and community members for being here tonight. It's nice to see you all, and it's nice that you are here participating in the business of the county in this way. So, thanks for being here. Commissioner Sims and I will be at the NCACC Annual Conference Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of this week. So, we will be, um, learning quite a bit about what's going on at the state level, how that's affecting counties, and, um, speaking with others and bringing ideas back, um, to Person County in terms of how we can serve our community better. Just to let you know, we are keeping an eye on the weather. So, we will be monitoring, um, the developing storms and taking any measures that are necessary to ensure, um, the safety of the people here. I also want to mention that tomorrow is the National Night Out. That's at Palace Point, and it's from five o'clock to seven o'clock. So, this is a very, um, important community event that's supported by many of our county departments, the city, and a variety of other community organizations. And it's a great way to bring people together. That is tomorrow at five o'clock at Palace Point. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sims?
Thank you. Um, I also attended the PCBIC meeting that you're referring to, Commissioner Powell. And, uh, immediately after that, we had zoning and planning, and that was a three-hour meeting. So, it was a long day, but, uh, got, uh, we got through it. And then, on the twenty-sixth, uh, I attended the volunteer, uh, the, for the appreciation for the play yard dedication, animal services. And that was, uh, uh, nice, and I, I do appreciate all the volunteers, uh, that do help out at the clinic. I appreciate all volunteers because I mean, a lot of people, this county would not be where it's at now if we didn't have all the volunteers that volunteer, including our volunteer fire department. So, I appreciate everyone that comes out and gives up your time and you're volunteering for the good of our, our community. The other thing I want to do is I want to clarify a couple of things. And I want to read an article, read from the paper. Some of you may have already read it, and I'm gonna read it and then have another comment. This is from July twenty-fifth. This is from Don Norinsky. Says, uh, reading at the bottom, towards the bottom, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. This is, "It's important to note that the Oakland Public Hearing in December twenty-third, Mr. Sims voted in favor of the controversial MEC rezoning without any public comment, rationale, or decision or public declaration of no known conflict of interest, even after thirty-five speakers and over three hundred and fifty constituents forced their absolute opposition to the rezoning, whose passionate participation in the democratic process, Sims publicly called insanity. Finally, it's important to note that Mr. Sims will be running for reelection this November on twenty twenty-four." First of all, I did not say that, and it was in quotes. And it bothers me that we have people who will put things in the paper that are inaccurate and not true. And I can tell you, if I had done that, if I had said something like this to someone and put it in the paper, I would be calling, I would be apologizing. Because I would not put much into anything else you write if you're writing something that is not true and you had it wrong. And I will go back to our recent paper. This is for the record. A letter to the editor from Don, uh, from Don Norinsky that appeared in the July twenty-fifth edition to Courier Times attributed a statement referring to the Board of Commissioners' "Public Hearing Concerning Dominion Energy's Marai Energy Center" as insanity to Commissioner Derek Sims. That description was not made by Sims, but rather by Commissioner Charlie Palmer during January second Person County Board of Commissioners' meeting. So, again, I want to say that. I want it to be public, and I want to, people to know. I'm not, I'm not gonna put up with you putting something in the paper that is not true and you put in quotes. It's not right, and I will call you out about that. So, I hope that, uh, Mr. Norinsky will hear this and understand, um, that he was wrong. So, with that, again, uh, I want to thank everybody coming out. It was a good crowd, and that's all I got.
I'm glad I gave it to you.
Commissioner Palmer?
Glad I caught that, so you could bring it up. Because they don't have a proofreader at the shop up there evidently. I do have a couple of items. Uh, first of all, I would like to apologize for missing uh, the retirement of our finance officer, Amy Wernberger. Last week, I had it planned, I had it written on my calendar, and the next day, I realized I missed the meeting or the recognition. I did attend the PCBIC meeting, and I asked one question. And my answer was basically non-exempt. I didn't get the answer I was looking for. They tiptoed around my question. Okay, attended Parks and Rec Recreation Tennis Tournament this past weekend. It was a great turnout, and, um, had a lot of classmates of mine playing. I try to make it every year. And I'm gonna echo back off of Dirk here, off of that. Can, it was a continual onslaught against Charlie Palmer by this individual, but I caught it. And for those who didn't catch, I forget, it was January something, I brought it out in my final comments. The Curious Times put it, my exact comments, that the majority of the citizens at the No-Mec rezoning meeting were not from Person County, they were outside paid protesters. But Mr. Norinsky continued, continued to slam me in the paper. I was up to my ears with it. And I dug through every copy, and every time that they put statements of mine in there, I keep for future reference. And I found exactly what I needed. And guess where I found it at? Under Department of Social Services. Entirely different. No relation to Department of Social Services. I showed it to you, and I showed it to Kelly, and I thanked you both that night downstairs as well as up here. So, I'm on board with this guy right here. You guys really need a proofreader. That due to county of great service, because this is misinformation, disinformation, and false information that y'all are printing. Commissioner Perry?
I think y'all have pretty much covered everything, so no report.
Well, gave you the opportunity. Uh, Commissioner Thomas?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out, especially, we have EMS, we have all the volunteer firefighters and departments. Thank y'all for answering the call whenever it comes out. You don't get the credit you deserve. So, while you're here, we want to thank you for your hard work.
Thank you all. Yeah, appreciate it.
I got one thing I'd like to say.
Okay.
Uh, I would just like to say, uh, George and the newspaper Courier Times, I do want to thank y'all for printing that correction because I did call you and ask you to check into that, and I appreciate what y'all did. Y'all went back and pulled the records and clarified it. So, thank you very much for doing that.
Okay, at this point, we do have a closed session coming up. Motion, we do need a motion to go into closed sessions. All closed sessions will, will include County Manager Kathy, Clerk Solomon, County Attorney Morpheus, in, uh, closed session number one for the purpose of, purpose to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. With, with Attorney Bo Summers allowed to attend the following by closed session, uh, number two, to discuss personnel. Have that motion.
Someone?
Motion to go into closed session, in a discussion. Here, none, all in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carried. We'll take three or four minutes.
With no further business to come before this board, do we have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Any discussion? If you're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, non-motion carried.